Good morning, Commissioners. Congratulations on your election. Welcome to the two new Commissioners. All right, I'm going to ask you all to repeat after me. Raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
Aye.
Aye, Jenna.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully execute.
And that I will faithfully execute.
And discharge the duties.
And discharge the duties.
The Office of Clay County Commissioner.
The Office of Clay County Commissioner.
In and for the County of Clay.
In and for the County of Clay.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability and understanding.
And to the best of my ability and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, new Commissioners. All right, now we have to sign. So if you want to come up here one at a time, Frank, we'll start with you. If you want to sign here, I'll witness your signature. Congratulations. Is this two or three for you, Frank?
This is three.
Three, awesome. How do you pronounce your last name?
Kay.
Kaylee. Nice to meet you, I'm Michelle Lawson.
Nice to meet you.
Congratulations, sign right there if you would. And last but not least, Mr. Ebinger, how are you?
Ah, it's Dave. I've been enjoying that.
Yeah, no kidding. Now it's Commissioner. Yeah, that's true. Congratulations. Pardon? Oh, thanks, thanks. Great to see you, say hi to him.
Hello, Jenna.
Congratulations, Dan. I sanitized, don't worry. He's got her.
Hey, everybody. Welcome to this special day where we welcome two new board members. I guess the first thing we're supposed to do is call the meeting to order. But we do welcome Dave Ebinger and Jenna Kaylee to the board here. And with that, we'll move on to the meeting. First thing is the approval of the agenda.
Move of approval.
Motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Kevin, second by Jenny, to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And with that, we got some employee recognitions this morning. And the first one we got this morning is Jared Jacobson with recognizing employees this year with the five-year increment. He's Jared's got 15 years in this year. Says presented the grateful recognition of 15 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County and its citizens. Jared Jacobson was the sheriff's office presented this 5th of January 2021. Okay, congratulations, Jared. Okay.
Hopefully.
We'll see.
Uh, just a few more things about Jared here. Jared's been with us for 15 years and at times he's a patrol deputy. He was a field training officer. And as a field training officer, the responsible training of deputies potentially has also part of way from UTO to PTO, which is police training. More emotional intelligence-based training. We found to be a lot better for us. Jared is sent to school civil process where he serves paper. He's been able to fill that role very, very well. He's also one of our first instructors along with our fire. It's our role as a deputy very well, and we're very happy to have him.
I keep a close eye on Jared because he just listed a couple of blocks from me.
He keeps a close eye on you, Frank.
Uh, next with 20 years of service, Pamela Foster. Oh, Pamela's here, okay. Guess I should have taken them in order. There you go. Congratulations, Pamela.
Thank you.
Well, Pam and I went to law school together, and so we graduated in 1997.
Ryan, can you use that portable mic? We sort of our viewing audience can hear what you're saying. Thank you.
I was saying that Pam and I went to law school together, and so we graduated in 97. And then we realized sometimes we talk about that some of our younger attorneys in our office were barely born at that time. So I don't think Pam thought she was going to have to hang out with me for the next 20 years when we were in law school, but congratulations.
Thanks.
But Pam, of course, has been with the office back in the early days doing city work. She's worked her way all the way up to chief assistant. She's probably one of the premier attorneys within the state doing criminal sexual conduct prosecutions. She's done numerous murder prosecutions. So some of the most serious crimes within the county, within the state. She's really an expert in a lot of areas, and I depend on her greatly as a chief assistant. She helps me. She's even sat in and served as the county attorney when I've been gone and deployed. So she is just extreme talent. She's a mentor to all the younger attorneys in our office. And so the county is greatly appreciative to have you here, and I'm greatly appreciative of having you. So thanks, Pam.
And Rebecca Upton, 25 years. I guess she isn't here today, is she? I guess not, somebody will. Guess we'll get that to her somehow, huh? She's got 20, with the auditor's office, she's got 25 years in. And I guess if I would have done these in a row, I would have done it right. There we go, with the sheriff's office, Janelle Wilkenbug. She's got 30 years in. He's a diehard, way to go. Congratulations very much. Sorry about that mark I did, didn't do them in order.
That's all right. Grab this. So yes, 30 years of service. Thank you, Janelle, for your service. When Janelle started, she started in 1991, hired by Sheriff Fisher. And worked for Sheriff Fisher for what, a week? Maybe?
Yeah.
A week, and then it was Sheriff Costello. But Janelle, when she started, she was working the patrol division. She worked night patrol, day patrol, eventually moving into warrants and transports where she currently is working. Warrants and transports, that is another difficult position within the sheriff's office because it's not just going out and getting in the car and driving and picking somebody up. There's a lot of rules associated with it, and they have to make sure that they get people back to our facility within a certain period of time so they're in front of a judge within either 36 or 48 hours. So there's a lot of different nuances with the warrants and transports that they have to know, and they have to make sure that they're fulfilling. And Janelle does that very well. She's one of those people that if I have a question as it relates to that, I'm going to go to her because she's been in the position for so long. And we've got great staff over at the sheriff's office. And Janelle, you, of course, are one of those. So thank you very much for your service.
Okay, with that, do we have any citizens that called in or anything?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
We'll go into the payment of the bills and vouchers.
Move of approval.
Got a motion by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Jenna. There you go, you got it in there. Okay, we got a motion by Kevin, second by Jenna, to approve the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Here we got minutes from December 15th and December 22nd. Need to be approved.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Here we got a motion by Jenny, and second by Dave. Now we got everybody in there. Okay, for the approval of the minutes from December 15th and the 22nd, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, okay. And with that, we'll go into the state of the county address. Have a seat. Okay, good morning, everyone. On behalf of myself and my fellow Commissioners, I would like to wish you all a Happy New Year and thank you for trusting us to serve the citizens of this great county. While 2020 provided us all with many challenges, we feel Clay County continues to be in prepared position to meet the ongoing needs of the citizens. 2020 will forever be connected to COVID-19 worldwide pandemic. It has been a full year of unexpected, once a generation obstacles for all of us. Even with unprecedented events that we faced, this board remains committed to providing the excellent customer service you have come to expect. Even through campus access limitations and department closures, our employees worked diligently to adjust and adapt to answer that call. The first department that I wish to acknowledge this year is our Public Health Department, Kathy McKay. The Incident Management Team and Public Health Staff began work in January of 2020 in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. They have partnered with the Minnesota Department of Health, Infectious Diseases, and Emergency Preparedness Teams while following vital guidelines established by the National Center for Disease Control. Public Health uses all available evidence-based strategies at individual and community levels to break transmission change and address high levels of community transmission to help reduce illness, hospitalizations, and deaths. The Public Health Incident Management Team also worked in partnership with the MDH to provide coordination efforts with local K-12 school districts, higher education, congregant care facilities, daycares, work sites, and healthcare systems to assist in the response efforts. Public Health is also a member of the Red River Valley Task Force, which has met weekly discussed data, response plans, and public health mitigation strategies throughout the metro area. With COVID-19 vaccines now arriving, Public Health will play a critical role in the dispensing in accordance with the phases established by the federal and state health agencies. The board would like to publicly thank Kathy and her staff for their tireless work during the pandemic. They have done an excellent job responding on behalf of our communities and region. We are grateful for their leadership, understanding their excellent response efforts will be greatly needed for many months into 2021. In June of 2020, Governor Walz and state legislators established a funding program in Minnesota that included $2 billion for the state, counties, and cities in coronavirus aid, relief, and economic security funding for CARES dollars. These funds became available through federal Corona's Relief Fund legislations. This board authorized the formation Corona's Relief Fund Committee, led by Commissioners Campbell and Mojo, to dispense the $7,843,443 allotted. The goal of this committee was to establish funding categories to address areas of highest needs, providing monies to areas which were not likely to receive funding or grants from other sources, and to do so in a time-sensitive fashion with the full board's approval. Highlights of the programs. Funding was provided for business relief with over 160 businesses, nonprofits, and long-term care facilities utilizing the program. Clay County also invested in the new and different ways to safely deliver services such which enhance technology and infrastructure such as the new DMV location and this multipurpose community meeting space. These investments have provided more efficient ways for business to be conducted and provide an environment that better protects our citizens and our staff. Dollars were allocated to multiple-party agencies to address community resilience and needs such as free mental health services, seniors, and veterans funding. Dollars went to public health outreach and services in response to the COVID-19 and preparation for a mass vaccination. We are thankful to the federal and state governments in providing funds. Human resources had a very busy year. Along with addressing the ongoing needs of 623 employees, the HR department also had to adjust its workload to combat the coronavirus pandemic. Changes to the federal and state law required HR to stay up to date with new guidelines. COVID-19 also impacted our Clay County workforce. During 2020, roughly one-third or 200 employees experienced either quarantined or isolated due to the COVID-19 virus. Work-from-home policies were developed to continue to provide seamless and quality services to the citizens and employees of Clay County. The Technology Services Department stepped forward in 2020 and played an integral role in establishing a remote work program. When Governor Walz signed Executive Order 2020 directing Minnesota to stay at home, it founded the board asking tech services to stand up a program that would allow all county departments to remain open during this order and serve our citizens without issue. This dramatic change in work environment took place virtually overnight and was conducted without interruption of service, truly a remarkable feat for which we are grateful. In early 2020, Information Services staff, along with the recorder staff, worked with township officials to formally record each township's goals. The project stalled due to pandemic, but it was hoped to be revived in 2021. The GIS staff participated in multiple census-related activities such as Complete Count Committee in hopes of getting the best possible turnout for the 2020 census. Staff played important roles with our business relief program and applications along with lending their creative expertise to campus signage. At the beginning of 2020, the Clay County site received an average of 44,000 visits each month. After pandemic received, our website traffic almost doubled, averaging 77,000 visits each month. The Information Services staff worked diligently with Public Health and administration to ensure the information on the website was current and accurate. Social Services and its 129 full-time employees covering nine divisions administered over 40 different state and federal programs for individuals and families in need. They are tasked with responding to concerns of child abuse and neglect, adult protection, substance abuse, mental health concerns, and disability and elder services. They administer the public assistance programs on behalf of the state and federal government such as food support, healthcare, housing, and cash grant programs. In addition, they also conduct the licensing activities on behalf of the state for family daycare and adult and child foster homes. Social Services maintains 50 contacts with various community partners to help address the needs of our citizens. 2020 brought many additional challenges due to COVID-19. Although limited in serving our citizens face-to-face, the state and federal government allowed services to continue under virtual or telephonic needs, means. In addition, many program requirements were waived under the piece-time emergencies allowing services and benefits to continue without interruption. As we move forward in this pandemic, Social Services will continue to address the increased demand for mental health services and supports as individuals and families struggle with employment concerns, distant learning, childcare issues, and general overall stress. The county attorney's office continues to work toward promoting true justice, public safety, and effective government. The county attorney's office has 11 assistant county attorneys, along with the county attorney who works numerous issues in support of law enforcement, prosecuting crime, assisting victims, and making government functions. Additionally, the office has five legal assistants, two front-office staff, and three victim services assistants that work tirelessly to ensure the county government functions continue to work smoothly throughout the year. The county attorney's office opened more than 2,000 unique cases over the past year, enforcing laws from traffic matters, misdemeanor matters, property crimes, to more serious personal crimes such as burglary, robbery, serious assaults, and murder. The office further works closely with the Social Services regarding child and need of protection and services, cases to ensure that family and children are protected and cared for throughout the community. The victim services officers served and assisted over 800 victims with matters from affidavits of loss, victim impact statements, and navigating victims through the court system. The county attorney's office continues to work to modernize its computerized system for creating and tracking files to ensure that the office is on the cutting edge of prosecuting and syncing up with the Minnesota courts. COVID-19 has impacted how courts hearing trials are being held. Our current county attorney's office has continued to adjust to meet the ever-changing court process. 2020 presented many different challenges for the sheriff's office and each of their divisions. Each division had to make several changes in how they normally operate due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Civil unrest throughout the county also puts focal point on law enforcement. The demand for assistance continues to be high, with 16,881 calls for service, 489 transports covering 61,184 miles, and 1,334 civil papers served. Body worn cameras became part of the uniform this fall. The goal of these cameras is to increase transparency and accountability and will work in tandem with SWAT cameras to assist with investigations. The sheriff's department continues reviews and adjusts their practices to ensure the safety of personnel and citizens. Clay County continues to contract with the Minnesota Department of Corrections to provide probation services to all juvenile offenders in Clay County, as well as adult misdemeanors, gross misdemeanor offenders. Case loads continue to reflect clients who are struggling with chemical dependency and mental health issues, which often leads to other behaviors that cause concern for the safety and or community safety. Probation is partnering with local judicial teams and the Clay County Correctional Center in an effort to provide pre-trial supervision services in the community. Clients receive ongoing supportive services, upcoming court reminders, and drug and alcohol testing. The West Central Regional Juvenile Center's two-year remodel and expansion project was completed in the spring of 2020, allowing the agencies to properly serve the needs of Clay County and 10 member counties for the decades to come. In addition to increasing capacity, the West Central Regional Juvenile Center continually strives to meet the changing needs of their residents to expand its services and program to address trauma and additional increased mental health demands. Strong ties continues with the Moore Public Schools, Lakeland Mental Health, Lutheran Social Services, psychologists, and many other area providers continue to set them apart from other facilities. Despite the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, 2020 was a busy year for planning the Sony Department, approving 144 building permits, 14 use permits, 15 variances, and 38 minor subdivisions. The department also secured funding for the Fargo-Morgue Metropolitan Council of Governments to develop a new Clay County Comprehensive and Transportation Plan in 2021. The department looks forward to serving residents and guiding developments in 2021. The assessors' office continues to work to maintain an acceptable level of valuation, meeting the standards given by the Department of Revenue and providing proper classification of our taxpayers' properties. It has another busy year reviewing, it was another busy year reviewing 3,417 parcels in the city of Barnstable, Comstock, and Glendon, in addition to Crackness, Mullen, Moorhead, and Oakport Townships. COVID-19 requires adjustments in business practices also. Would all improved parcels visited, but to no internal structure tours conducted. Office staff continue to serve our taxpayers through mailings, phone calls, and courthouse appointments, in addition to addressing the high volume of property transfers in 2020. Clay County also continued to support two-year tax abatement program. The abatement program involves several cities and school districts in Clay County. City and county representatives continue to report that this tax abatement has led to new home construction, and it's good for the growth of our communities. The extension of this program is set to run through 2022. 2020 brought both challenges and successes in the recorder's office. A new recording software program led to many efficiencies in their recording process. The completion of the transition was just in time as this year has seen a sharp increase in the number of real estate recordings and documents that were submitted to be recorded electronically. Staff worked diligently through the challenge of continuing to provide access to the public records through the pandemic. They also worked through legislative changes to be able to continue to issue marriage licenses to the public in a safe and convenient manner. The recorder's office has continued to digitize records to improve the process for the public in locating records and limiting face-to-face contact. The auditor's office is responsible for the collection of taxes and distribution of revenues, classifying tax assessment ratings, paying the county's bills, county payroll, and certifying the accounting process to meet the government standards of acceptable practices. The auditor's office ensured that the election proofs ran smoothly this fall. The auditor along conducted interviews with businesses with other state agencies for a new payroll system. The highway department continues to maintain over 700 miles of county roads and another 875 miles of township roads. Sustaining road conditions due to record snowfall last winter provided challenges. The record snowfall led to the need to prepare for potential spring flooding. The wet conditions of winter and spring also led to unprecedented soft roads that remained troublesome long into the summer. The highway department continued to focus on projects on the five-year plan with replacements of 12 aging bridge structures with precast concrete box culverts. Another notable item this year was the replacement of 4,800 street and avenue signs in 12,000 locations by our sign department. Solid Waste has had a very successful, eventful, and successful year. A landfill cell expansion, which will give Clay County an additional five-to-eight-year capacity, along with a new citizen drop-off area were completed in 2020. There were 13 new gas wells added at the landfill, which will allow for heating the new landfill building. A new flare also went into limit the odor. The Minnesota Legislature provided funding for a new Clay County Resource Recovery and Problem Materials Center to be located in Moorhead. This was the culmination of five years of collaborative work with Solid Waste Department, the city of Moorhead, and representatives from this board. We are also thankful for the efforts of our local legislators, Representatives Mark Warren Lean and Senator Ekin in helping us secure the funding. Construction is set to begin April 2021. The Veterans Service Office continues to do an outstanding job making themselves available to over 3,700 Clay County veterans. COVID-19 required the VSO to be creative in public outreach, holding virtual events in efforts to identify veterans in need assistance. The Veterans Service Office continues to work with veterans to ensure housing, no known homeless vets in Clay County, and to reserve employment-unemployment rate of .07 for Clay County veterans. The Veterans Courts Program continues as an alternate in keeping veterans from being incarcerated, offering veterans additional supports and accountability with the goal of helping them get back on the right path. of helping them get back on the right path. As our county campus grows, so does the demand of our building maintenance staff and custodial services. They continue to provide excellent customer service to our departments while maintaining the county campus in which we can be proud. COVID-19 had these departments playing a central role in limiting the spread. They collaborated to clean the campus multiple times per day, so we were able to buy services more safely. The County Extension Office continues to be available to help county residents with agriculture and horticulture issues. This past year, COVID-19 presented new challenges. Extension staff continue to answer citizens' questions and deliver virtual educational presentations. 4-H programs continue to offer positive educational programming across the county for our youth. Currently, there are 14 4-H clubs in Clay County. With the cancellation of the Clay County Fair, Extension stepped in with virtual judging to ensure that the club members received acknowledgement and recognition for their hard work. Lastly, we would like to acknowledge the Extension Regional Director Ben Anderson, who recently left his role. We thank Ben for his leadership and collaboration and wish him well. While not a county program, Clay County continues to work closely with the Clay Soil and Water Conservation Districts, which marked its 75th anniversary in 2020. The Soil and Water Conservation District in Clay County worked collaboratively with the county Feedlots Officers duties, oversight of buffer law compliance, aquatic invasion species programming, and worked with representatives of all 30 townships on noxious weed control as part of the county ag inspectors duties, just to highlight a few. Flood protection continues to be an important issue for our county. County commissioners, personnel continue to be involved in the FM Division Authority and other flood mitigation committees. A settlement agreement to resolve all federal and state litigation related to the FM Area Division Project was signed October 26, 2020 by leaders of the Metro Flood Division Authority and a number of upstream entities. This agreement will pave the way for the FM Division Authority to move forward, the project forward, and ensure proper flood protection and economic security for our region. The Minnesota State Auditor's Office presented this report December 17, 2020 to the Clay County Administration and county auditor directors referencing the year ending on December 31, 2019. In the issue of this audit report, the state auditor has issued an unqualified opinion of the county's financial statements, verifying we conform to the applies to political accounting standards. This report will be sent on the full county board in the near future. County Board adopted the annual operating budget and tax levy for the year 2021. The total expenses for 2021 are estimated to be $110,447,500. The revenue sources necessary to cover these expenses include a $36,685,718 property tax levy. State aids, numerous grants, serious services, utilization of fund balance. The property tax represents a 4.77 increase over the 2020 tax levy. Clay County witnessed a net growth in the tax base of 1.28 due to new construction, leading to a net levy increase of 3.49 for 2021. The 2020 election process witnessed three of our county commissioners up for reelection. Commissioner Gross was reelected, and Commissioner Wayland and Haney made the decision not to seek reelection. On behalf of this board, I would like to thank Grant and Jim for their distinguished leadership and vision in serving the citizens of Clay County and wish them well in their retirement. We would like to extend our welcome to Commissioners Kaylee and Ebinger. I look forward to working with you in the coming years. I would also like to acknowledge this board in ongoing appreciation for the personnel of Clay County. You have showed dedication, creativity, and adaptability in meeting the needs of our citizens. Providing excellent service to our citizens is one of our cornerstone values at Clay County. COVID-19 has provided a challenge that you have met and exceeded. Thank you. 2020 has shown to be a challenging year for all of us. The Clay County Board of Commissioners would like to thank our citizens for their continued support. Our board is committed to being excellent stewards of your tax dollars, while providing the services you have come to expect in the most efficient, cost-effective, and professional manner possible. I would also like to thank my fellow commissioners for their leadership, dedication, and hard work. Your service is greatly appreciated during this unprecedented year. Lastly, we would like to extend our ongoing support for those of you directly affected by COVID-19, whether it's the loss of employment, passing of a loved one, or the challenges of maintaining your business in the current climate. We stand with you. Please feel free to contact any of the county commissioners or county administrator if you would like to share your feedback or suggestions. Thank you, and best wishes for a wonderful 2021. Okay. And thank you for a good year. Okay. With that, we'll go into the election of the 2021 Chair and Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Commissioner Campbell as the 2021 Chair.
Okay, we've got a motion by Jenny, second by Dave, to appoint Kevin Campbell as the 2021 Chair. Any other discussion or any nomination? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. You're going to do the Vice Chair then? Okay. We'll switch some positions here.
Yep. Member.
Sneaky.
Magic.
Don't know where.
Before we move on to the nomination for Vice Chair, I do want to recognize Commissioner Gross. He's been on this board now for 18 years, and I've seen nothing like this year, this past year has been with this pandemic. And Commissioner Gross, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you very much.
And thank you to all of you for what you have done this past year as well. And I'd like to congratulate and welcome Commissioner Kaylee and Commissioner Ebinger. Look forward to working with you as well. So with that, we'll now open up nominations for Vice Chair.
I would like to nominate Jenny Mojo for that decision.
Okay, we have a nomination.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Or in final call? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move into our next item, and that is the, each year we go through and we establish our meeting schedule and, yeah. Get them. And we typically meet the first four Tuesdays, and when there's a fifth Tuesday, we do not meet unless it's under a rare circumstance where we call a special meeting. So is there a motion to adopt the 2021 schedule?
I'll make a motion to adopt the schedule for the first four Tuesdays, if you mind, at 8:30.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
Well, I think since there are two new members on this board, Mr. Chair, I certainly feel like we should maybe discuss it to make sure that it fits within a workable arrangement for them as well. But I think in terms of the availability for staff to be present, it's important to keep it as is. Also, I know that there's been so much that we've done in the last year that there's been a couple times where we have had that fifth Tuesday. I think that we're all flexible to have that if need be, but certainly works in my schedule, but wanted to have any discussion if not.
Very good. And what I'd like to add to that, too, and this kind of goes to Steve, it goes to you. I think this year, as we plan and as we do department updates and as we start preparations a little bit later in the budget, I want us to spend, I want to get a more thorough report from all of department heads on behalf of our new commissioners so that they certainly, this is a lot of work and it's a lot to learn, and in your first couple of years, it's important that you, we take the time to make sure you understand how everything is run. We don't necessarily like to have long meetings, but if they run a little bit longer than normal, that's great, so we can help learn. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. All right, so then we'll go into the adoption of the 2021 newspaper designations, and for our new board members, these do sometimes rotate, I think, don't they, Steve? And so this year, what you have down here on these resolutions are the new rotation for 2021. So we'll start with Resolution 2020-01.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-1 to designate the Clay County Union, Barnesville Record Review, and Holly Herald with copies of the proceedings.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Mojo.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Clay County Union to be designated as Clay County Board of Commissioners Newspaper.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Gross.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-3 to designate the Barnesville Record Review to publish the first printing of our financial statement.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-04 to adopt that Holly Herald be designated by the Clay County Board of Commissioners to publish the second printing of the Clay County Financial Statement.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. Very good, thank you. Okay, now we have before us the review of the committee appointments, and I think the, and the appointment to the 2021 AMC committees, and I think those we need to get off to AMC right away, is that correct? So you've had, you've all had a chance to review these committee lists. I know in past, we've taken today, the first day, to review them and finalize them next week, so to allow you to have opportunities if there are things that really might conflict with the schedule or something, that we'd certainly like to hear about that. But if we could, in terms of the AMC, we have Commissioner Gross, you to go to general government, that, okay, and Commissioner Ebinger, public safety, myself would be in transportation, Commissioner Mojo, environmental and natural resources, right?
Correct, and then also the extension.
And, yes, and you're going to, you're going to be Chair, you are Chair?
To your Chair, yeah.
That's an important position, that's good for you. And then Commissioner Kaylee, the health and human services. Okay, so I think with that, maybe if we can have a motion to approve those today, so that we can send that off to AMC?
Mr. Chair, can they all be together?
Sure, yeah, they can do it combined as the AMC appointments.
Mr. Chair, a motion to approve the AMC appointments as described.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kaylee, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. Steve, are there any others that need to be done today that you know of?
I know the only one, the other part of Moore, I haven't developed.
So that would be Commissioner Ebinger to the executive board on that, and then Commissioner Campbell as well?
Well, there's only one that goes to the executive board.
Commissioner Campbell is a part of that committee as a request, and so, from the committee, and so, or through an appointment. But yes, we, from the county standpoint, we just have one executive board member.
I apologize, I was just looking at the notes. It must not have gotten changed because of Commissioner Wayland. So Steve, is your hope to then appoint Kevin to the EDC Exec Board and then have Commissioner Ebinger as your alternate?
No, the other, keeping it the way that it is.
So just to clarify, Clay County has one board member on the Greater Fargo-Morgue Economic Development Authority, and that person serves on the executive committee. The other position which, and that was held by Commissioner Wayland before, the other position that I, that I hold on there was a public one that is determined by the EDC. They take another public official, and they have chosen to have two from Clay County. I assume that that will not change, but that's, we only have through our contract with them one, one appointment to the executive committee. And I think that's fine, having Commissioner Ebinger be on that. I think that'd be good for him to...
Well, I certainly see the value in Clay County having two spots represented there, but I would make a motion to appoint Commissioner Ebinger to the Greater Fargo-Morgue EDC Executive Board.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Mojo.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. All right.
I think one other one we have to notify is that the Minnesota Rural Counties Caucus about the appointments, there's a switch there, we're Grant.
Okay, so...
Grant is off that committee, you know, I'm on it, and Jenny's also on as the alternate. So I think they have to be notified about that also.
So if we can take that as one, so...
I don't know if that needs to be a motion, but it's one of the ones that need to be notified.
Yeah, well, I think there's several, there were some that...
There's lots of them, they're probably...
But if you want to do that today, we certainly can, so that, right now, we have Commissioner Gross as the, would be the voting... So that, right now, we have Commissioner Gross is the, would be the voting delegate, and Commissioner Mojo would be the alternate. Would we have, would we have a motion to go along with that?
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
Okay, Commissioner Kaylee, motion? Was that a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. And then Steve will have the remainder of these on for final approval next Tuesday. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
In the next week, I know one of the hard parts when I first got on the board was it took several months for these different boards and organizations to get our contact information so we could start knowing what the meeting schedule is. And as we filter through here, there's been several changes to see, make sure we don't have any conflicting times. If we can reach out to some of these organizations to let us know what the meeting schedules are, that would be great.
And thank you for bringing it up, Commissioner Mojo. And I do want to point out to you as commissioners, and especially these new ones, certain ones of these committees that you're on, you also have the ability to maybe determine the times to have them. There's, there are some that, that are fixed by, because they're larger entities, that you really don't have, have the ability to do that. But some of them, especially when you're dealing with internal departments and those types of things, you do have some ability to maybe ask for a change in times to adjust to your schedule, so I just want to point that out.
One item I noticed, the Law Library, does that need an alternate, or is that, do they meet regularly?
They meet every two to three months. I'm looking at Brian, maybe I'm wrong here, but they meet on Mondays, and that is a conflict, so I've requested to change that, so Commissioner Kaylee would have that instead of myself.
Is there an alternate on that one?
Not typically.
Okay.
One, one item I may point out, I had discussed the possibility of transferring the Cass Clay Food Commission to a different commissioner. We're in the, a two-year chair cycle of that, and I am currently the chair. If it would be of this board's wish, I would like to ask to have an alternate for that so that I can serve as chair over the next year, but next January would be able to transfer that over to someone. The importance of that is that it's in collaboration with MetroCog, and they're in the process of working with both committees for our comp plan. So if it worked, would ask if Commissioner Kaylee could be my alternate for the Cass Clay Food Commission.
Okay, I think that's, that would be appropriate. Like anything, we just need to make sure that the board that you're requesting allows that through their.
I've talked with the strategic plan.
Okay, all right, so, yeah, as long as.
You're aware.
Okay, so that can, maybe that can just be added to Commissioner Kaylee's, if you're okay with that. And then we'll, that will be part of what we adopt next week. Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to our next item, and that is the request for approval for contracts for social workers, case aides, and deputies for 2021. Mr. Brooke, welcome. Good morning.
Well, first I'd like to welcome Commissioner Ebinger and Commissioner Kaylee to the board. I also want to appreciate Colleen putting me in front of Kathy McKay for this agenda item, so she'll have to listen to my agenda item instead.
We could switch.
It was a good switch.
Is there a motion to change the agenda?
She wanted to make a motion back there to change it, so she could go first, but.
All right, go ahead.
You denied. So as you know, we had four bargaining units that were up for negotiations this year. And a little bit, a little bit of a history on that for the two new commissioners is that we ended up agreeing to only do a two-year contract with those four bargaining units. Normally, we tried to do a three-year, but when we started these negotiations, we were kind of right in the thick of COVID-19 and just did not want to go out that third year. All of the bargaining units have agreed to that, to a two-year contract. We also, as you recall, did a market study in 2018, 2019 for implementation in 2020, which gave everybody a 7.42% increase on the grid this year. That included a 5.42% increase in the market study, and then a 2% COLA last year. Right now, we have a tentative agreement with three of the bargaining units. The social workers, the case aides, and the deputies have all agreed to a tentative agreement right now, and I'm waiting, awaiting signatures for those contracts. So I will have those contracts hopefully by next board meeting to have them signed. All three of the social workers, case aides, deputies have agreed to a 3% in 2021 and a 2% in 2022. We did on all the contracts some language changes regarding union dues in response to the Janus decision that was done back in June of 2018. And we also updated all the contracts with the new county contribution rates for 2021 for both the grandfathered people and the new employees hired after January 1st of 2020. We do have a few items that were mostly language changes and clarifications in the three contracts. And the, the one thing that we do are going to mediation with in the attorney's contract, which will be on January 25th, they have not agreed to the 2022 COLA at this time. Their request would be the 2% for January through June, and then a 3% from July to December of 2022. So we will be in mediation to, for that point. So with that, I'm open for any questions that you might have on the negotiations. We hope, we were hoping to get this done by December, but we just kind of missed it by a week, and so we're hoping that these three contracts, social workers, case aides, and deputies can be signed as soon as I get the signed copies from the unions. Any, any questions?
I just, I, just a little, maybe a little bit of history for, for our new commissioners. This is quite common for us, as Darren said, that we, in the past, we've done three-year contracts. Never have I seen a split year percentage. And not only that, but I would start being real concerned about me-too languages that are in clauses, or in clauses of other contracts. That's something to, you know, as you want to study up on, to know that some of those contracts have that. And I, you know, I'd hate to see that something changed where it would force a rollback to, in other areas, so.
The, I guess the one disadvantage of doing a two-year contract is basically in 2022, we will be negotiating with eight of our unions, eight of our nine unions. So that will be a very busy year for, for contracts. Because we, before, we have kind of staggered them, so we'll have three or four unions negotiating any one year, but, and we've normally done the three-year contract. With the two-year contract with these three or four bargaining units, it puts all eight in the 2022 bargaining timeframe with, I think its detox is the only outlier right now, so.
Well, it'll be a challenge.
Yes, it will.
All right, so we have a request then to approve the social workers, case aides, and deputies contract for 2021 and 2022. Are there any questions of Darren, of those contracts? I would entertain a motion then.
I move that we approve the contracts as stated.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, we have a second. Motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. Thank you for your work on that.
Yep, not a problem.
Those are always a little, little dicey at times, but good work.
And I will, I will bring back the attorneys as soon as we work through that process of mediation, and wherever that one goes, I'll bring that back to the board when that's completed.
And, you know, there's, there's times when, again, for our new members, when we get into some discussions where, where we sometimes will go into closed session to discuss labor issues as well, so.
And just a note, I did, I did run some numbers. I know Commissioner Campbell was kind of interested in this. As you know, last year, we changed our county contribution, where new people were getting less and more, and the family plans were, were a little bit more in the county contribution. As of 2020, we saved 104,000, a little over $104,000 in savings in insurance county contributions. Family county contributions was 30,000 more, with this total savings of 73,798. The other nice thing about this was that we increased our family plans by 12 just this year alone, and that was one of the goals of, of getting more family plans onto this, onto our, our health benefits. So I think we're, we were moving in the right direction. We have, now have, last year, we had 45 families and 396 single plans, and at the end of 2020, we had 57 family plans and 371 single plans, so.
And of course, by having more in the family plan, that helps the pool.
Correct, exactly.
Okay, well, thank you for that report. That number of 104,000 was slightly less than I was hoping for. I think we were looking at a 150, weren't we, we were hoping for about?
Yeah, the, we did not hire as many people this year.
Yeah.
Due to COVID and everything else, we did hire a lot of variable hours, which don't qualify for the county contribution. So I'm hoping once this, we get back into the normal flow, we'll.
Do you have, do you have anything else you want to keep talking about so we can delay Kathy some more?
Let me, let me brief you on anything else. That's all.
Thank you, thank you, Darren.
Now I can leave.
Okay. All right, our next item is the weekly 2000, or COVID-19 update with Kathy McKay, and I see you have Jamie with you. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners, and welcome to the two new commissioners. I know they were part of the department orientations, and I don't know why Steve didn't cut me off, mine was pretty lengthy when I was discussing public health, so apologize to the two new commissioners that had to put up with that. I forgot to send the test out that, you know, let me know if you heard anything I said. So I did hand out the numbers for the weekly numbers for the two new commissioners. We've been doing this for a long time.
Too long.
Too long, according to all the board members. That we have been providing the numbers weekly. The good news is, it's looking a lot better. You see, from December 23rd to the 30th, we only have 100 new additional total cases. So of course, we're seeing in the last few weeks, the number of total cases are going down. That's really, really good. Our deaths are at 78, you know, we don't, we didn't like to see any increase in deaths at all, and every, every death is, is not good. And so, but we, we have stayed at 78 since the 23rd. And then our number of active cases right now that we're currently following is 180. Now, we still have our contact tracers and case investigators working. We hired a number of those individuals as variable hour employees because the state was not able to keep up. The state started out doing contact tracing, case investigating. When they became overwhelmed, they reached out to local public health and asked that we assist in that process, which has been extremely challenging and difficult because there's, there were so many cases for such a long period of time. So it's nice to see the numbers go down. We still have variable hour employees that can follow those cases and then also follow up with the contacts of those cases. So it's helpful that we're still able to continue to do that. The cumulative reports, as you see, the 6,253 total cases as of December 30th, 5,995 out of isolation. So that's good. Minnesota, their reported cases, 423, 688, that's the cumulative number of cases across the state of Minnesota, 5,443 deaths. And the hospitalizations, now those are the Minnesota hospitals, the 22,000 cumulative hospitalized, 22,180, and cumulative ICU, 4,676. And the positivity rate is 7.6%. It remains about that same in the last couple of weeks. We, on the Clay County side, of course, our hospitals are on the Fargo side, and they've reported that the, the numbers are manageable for those that are hospitalized and ICU. They're not seeing increases in those numbers. On the last page, I have the, the data for the Cass counties. You can see there's 20,081 cases on the Cass County side, 440, 424 active cases, so their numbers are better as well, 169 deaths in Cass County. So they're, they're also seeing the decline. The graph that you see on the, on the first page, you know, we're doing every month on the 16th of the month, so as you can see, the graph doesn't depict really the decline because it's not updated until the 16th of January. So it looks like we're not declining based on the graph, but clearly the numbers are showing that. And then as we look at the vaccine data on the second page, so a little over 297,000 doses were allocated to Minnesota providers, 169,650 were the Pfizer brand, and then the Moderna was the 127,700 doses. Now, these are also not depicting those that are allocated to some through the federal partnerships, so we're not seeing those numbers on the federal partnerships for the data. That's the Veterans Affairs, the Bureau of Prisons, Indian Health Services. So those are not in those numbers. The cumulative vaccinations administered were over 78,000, and it shows the breakout. Pfizer vaccines were 67,000 over that, and then the Moderna vaccinations were almost 11,000. Now, in Clay County, we have about 474 individuals so far that have been vaccinated. And just to note, the Pfizer vaccine is the ultra-cold vaccine, so that was going to the healthcare systems that could manage. That was, that, that vaccine is a bit more challenging to manage as far as storage and handling. Public health agencies are getting the Moderna vaccine, that's the frozen vaccine. So it can, it's, it comes frozen, we manage it at a frozen state until we're ready to use it. Once it's refrigerated, so we can utilize that vaccine, it's good for 30 days, so it must be given within 30 days after refrigeration, or it is no longer viable. And I'll let Jamie jump in now to talk about our vaccinations that are going to be starting fairly soon.
Good morning. My name is Jamie Henon, I'm the Director of Nursing for Public Health. And we have been, the last week, planning and completing the training required for beginning our vaccine clinic. We are in the Phase 1A, and we have three priority areas. So we have a team that has been working on setting up the clinic and, and training staff, and we also have a team that's reaching out to the groups that would be vaccinated next. So we are officially, as we speak, setting up our first closed clinic. And our target population for today is the EMS providers, it's the vaccine testers at the saliva site, and then the vaccine vaccinators, the COVID vaccine vaccinators. So that's our target population today. As I mentioned, we've got a team that is reaching out to the next group. So we've got the three priority areas under Phase 1. And those include like our dental providers, our home care providers, our group homes, male health providers. We have a list, and they are calling us, but we are trying to be proactive and call them first. And so what we're doing is, we actually are collecting information on the number of doses that they will need. It's kind of a little bit of a dance because we want to use the vaccines quickly, but we have to get through the first priority before we can get to the second or the third. but we have to get through the first priority before we can get to the second or the third. And so that's where we are right now this week. So today, we'll be reaching out to them to see if we can fill some of those spots. Our clinics are planned for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday this week. And depending on what we get for requests, we would consider another day possibly. So while we do that, we're training the next group that will be required to do training. And we are reaching out to our universities again, which we've had several conversations with them. But we're in the process of checking nursing licenses and getting them on board to volunteer with us as well. It's going.
And just so you know, we only have a few hundred doses, so we don't have large amounts of vaccine. We should be receiving vaccine weekly, but it's of course in small amounts. So we want to make sure we're able to cover, they anticipate that this, even the first phase will be at least a month in length, and before we can even move into the next phase. So we'll get the vaccine out as quickly as we can and to those priority groups, just like Jamie talked about. There is a scam going on, so we want the public to know that there's some calls being made. And they're requesting, they're making the request to offer to be put on a list or offer to have a vaccine reserved, and of course, there's a price to pay. That is totally a scam. There is no list. When we go through the priority areas, just like Jamie said, we are reaching out to those groups. We don't have a list for people to get on for the vaccine. So there is no list. So if anyone in the public is getting a call to say, we'll put you on the list, we're from the Health Department, which is typically what they're going to say, or we'll make sure that we ensure that you can be on the list to receive a vaccine, and you pay so much money to do that. There's no cost for the vaccine. It's free to everyone. So just a warning to those that may have received that phone call. Because we do get a lot of calls about getting on the list. So people are calling our department. We're fielding many of them to get on a list. There isn't a list at this time.
So the, in going to the documentation you have here on page two on your vaccines, the 297,350 total doses, that's, that's what's been granted through the Minnesota Department of Health, correct?
Correct.
So there's additional places that we've talked about before, hospitals and all, they're independent of that.
That's correct.
When you look at the, listen to the national news and a lot of things, you, you hear about the frustration about why is it taking so long? And I see here, there's been administered, administered 78,000 of the 297,000. That's 26%. You know, I, again, it, it goes to, how, how can we, how can we speed that up? I'd, I'd like to see that be closer to 75% or 80% or 90% administered rather than sitting in some cooler someplace.
Mr. Chair, that was my question as well. I see that it's been allocated, but are those the number that's been received?
Yeah, the, the numbers that have been administered throughout Minnesota is, is that number, the 78,355. And the only thing I can state about that is they, they did have a lengthy process. So there was lots of requirements that, that had to be met. And of course, they were not necessarily sent proactively. So we had to meet requirements for trainings. There was very specific trainings, and they were, everyone that administers a vaccine, no matter if you've given vaccines for years and you're a registered nurse, it was irrelevant. You still had to go through all of the training that they required. We also had to get protocols in place, so they're, they're like physician orders. So we had protocols that we had to get in place. But I, I'm sure that that has been the delay. And then the number of shipments, like we're getting small amounts. So it just locally.
I don't, I don't mean to be critical of you and Clay County Public Health.
Sure.
I guess, and going to what Commissioner Moshe, so the 297,500, 350, Minnesota has received those amounts, correct?
Yes.
And we're just allocated, but they were received. And then of that, 78,000 have been administered. That's, and that's kind of the, now, I understand, you know, so the protocols and the training, hopefully that's done or close to being done so that we can get the rest of these vaccines out.
Yeah, and I, I can't speak for across the state. Obviously, they needed to, everyone needed to be trained, including hospital personnel. So I suspect you're going to see many more doses given because as they've allocated now to local public health and pharmacies that are serving the long-term care facilities, they are also a provider. And so that will ramp up as well as they get their vaccine. I, I can't speak to what the pharmacies have received and when that plan is, but it should be fairly soon as well. That's the goal, is to get that vaccine out.
Yeah, I was, you know, obviously, New York's a much bigger area than what we are. But I was listening to Governor Cuomo talk about the concern too about why is it taking so long to get these vaccinations out? And I think it's government's job to speed that up, even though we're notoriously known for being slow at other things.
Yes, so we, we definitely, here in Clay County, are, are expediting, are getting it out.
I didn't mean that as a criticism to you, but I just, Jamie, thank you.
Any other questions about the, as Jamie said, it'll be three days a week unless we need to add to that. And we'll know because what's happening with the priority areas is you pre-register. So we know who's registered. It's not just a walk-in. It will be a walk-in a number of months down the road, potentially, maybe not. Not sure how we're going to do the dispensing to the entire, when we get to the, beyond the phases and then can do the general population.
And one last thing, and I, I try to follow just some of the national stuff too. And I was listening to, I think it was last night, some reports that now they're considering on the Moderna vaccine, the ability to only give half of an amount so they can give it to more people. Have you, have you heard anything like that going on?
We have not. We have vaccine meetings every week.
Well, it's something that's, it's something now, I think, that's being researched that if they could double the numbers that they give and give half an amount, that it could still be effective. If it works, it's great.
I haven't heard that yet.
Okay, well, it was on national news last night.
In Minnesota. I haven't heard that in Minnesota.
Yeah, right, Minnesota hasn't relayed that yet, but.
And I think they're, you know, maybe they're just trying to induce a little bit more research on it. That'd be nice if it works.
And, and just one more quick thing. You know, our saliva test site continues. And so our last report, it was only 1,708 number of tests, so that's down still. That was the week of December 27th. So I'm sure that will pick up again. We're, we're noting a number of, you know, higher ed, for instance.
That might be because Fargo and Cass are doing more rapid testing now themselves.
I got a question on these rapid tests. Cass County, the news now, they said they had them for two months. Have we got any of those rapid tests that we can utilize?
We don't have any in public health.
We have the home testing kits that Minnesotans could use. But yeah, the rapid tests from North Dakota, we don't have those, no.
Why would Cass County get them, we don't get them? Or is that a question you don't, is it involved in it or what?
Yeah, not involved with that. Can't answer what Minnesota Department of Health has received, but it's not here locally.
I mean, it was in the paper this morning.
Right.
For two months, for two months they've had them already, haven't utilized them.
Right.
And I was just wondering whether we had any of them.
Yeah, we do not. And I read the same thing, that they, they had those. And I know they're doing them now. They set up a site to do those rapid tests now in West Fargo, but we don't have those. We still have the home tests, and of course, the saliva test site continues, so.
Okay, any other questions by commissioners?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have a request from Kathleen Schaefer to waive penalties on taxes. Attachment there, which I don't find in my stuff.
Good morning. Michelle's not here today, so I'm sorry.
Okay. Oh, I do have it. Thank you, okay.
So we received a letter from her a couple of weeks ago requesting to have the penalty waived. She is very current with paying her taxes on time. I don't know if you have the letter.
Yes. We do have it here. I, I'm just wondering now, maybe Steve, can you give our new commissioners? We, we had a, we had some set guidelines of what we could even, would even be allowed to come to us. Do you want to, or can you, can you?
Yeah, normally, we tell the people that if there's like a natural disaster or a hospitalization or a death, that would be something that you guys would be willing to listen to. But because of COVID, I know you've kind of stepped in on that as well.
Yeah, so, so typically, for, for it to be on our agenda, it's probably met some criteria that we've used in the past. Am I correct on that?
That is, that's correct, Mr. Chair. And our, our two new commissioners, part of the orientation, did have a portion of their, of their orientation that.
Okay, okay, very good.
Do we?
I haven't been in an orientation for a long time.
Did they do it back then?
They didn't even do it back then, though.
Probably should invite him again.
Mr. Gross.
Do we check, I mean, evidently you do. I mean, they say, she says she didn't check her statement till December, you know. Then this was due in October.
I spoke.
And that's a pretty big amount not to have checked, to see whether it's cleared your checkbook or not, you know.
I received her phone call personally, so I had talked to her about this as well. She said, in explaining it, she, she had stated to me that she doesn't check her checking account because she has enough cushion in there, that she doesn't.
Okay.
So she didn't notice that that money was still in there.
I guess I'm normally not opposed to some of it, but when I see it, two months later, that you find out that, you know, that this amount is not cleared, that's a big amount, you not know that it isn't cleared.
Was it due October 15th or November 15th?
October 15th.
Well, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I know that COVID-19 has changed how we do business at the county. It's definitely changed how people come in to do business in this building. And she, this applicant has stated that as well. I appreciate the fact that people follow up on things like this. I know there's probably a certain percentage of the country that would just maybe not even pay attention to it, and so be it. So I, I appreciate the fact that not only did the citizen address it, but also came in right away and paid the whole amount, including the fees and penalties.
I did look back, she usually pays in full every year.
Okay. And because of that, I would make a motion to waive the fees and penalties of $302.64.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second that.
We have a second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
At what point do we notify that you're late in payment? After October 15th, when it's due, at what point do we notify people that you didn't make your payment?
We do that in December.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. All right, we'll move into the request from Carol Edingill to waive penalties on taxes. That is your attachment N. Do you want to go ahead again?
And I spoke with her as well. She had called in, and her situation is she usually pays when she's at the office. And she neglected to do that because the office was closed. And she was actually exposed with the COVID and was hospitalized for some time.
Okay, sounds like a good, a good reason for me.
I'll make a motion to waive the penalty.
We have a motion to waive penalties.
Second.
And a second motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Abinger. Any further discussion?
I think for the meeting minutes, I would like to say that the penalty amount is $207.49.
All right, very good. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried, thank you. All right. Is our engineer standing out and ready?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We've got four items on our agenda today. First item is approval of final, final contract voucher. It's for a Batumis Mill and Overlay on County Road 33, north of Holly, up to County Road 26. I'll let Justin go through that, but I guess, very, very nice project, very welcomed by the locals up in this area, and let it turn out well.
Yeah, like Dave said, the project went really well. And once they got there, I think it was only two weeks that they spent there. And we got a lot of compliments, a lot of people thought it was a really good project. And the final contract that would be looking to get approved today would be $1,174,046.88.
Any questions?
I think, do you mind saying a little bit what the overrun resulted from?
Just a little bit on the shoulders. There was a few blowouts, but that we weren't anticipating that from the trucks traveling on it during the milling process. That was just extra Batumis.
It was an aged road, and so what we did is we essentially milled down the center 24 feet, and then we paved the entire roadway. And I do remember prior to the contractor getting there, there was some approaches, some section line drives that were in really tough shape. And you can't overlay the crumbling alligator asphalt, so it's unbelievable. Some of those had to be removed as well and make sure we fixed it up correct. It was a $10,000 overrun on a 1.16 million dollar job, so it turned out fairly well.
I think it's, it's pretty common that, that once you get into a project, you might have to, they might have to go a little bit deeper, or they might have to have more quantities than anticipated. The bids usually are based on a price per quantity.
Yep.
So it's, certainly isn't out of the ordinary. We've seen some go the other way too.
With the drop shoulder designs that we used in the past, a lot of these shoulders aren't as thick as the driving lane. So once that heavy traffic hits it during milling, it's kind of when you see some of these blowouts do, and it's really hard to avoid them.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I appreciate the fact that you're responsive to what you see once you get into a project. So my question was definitely not to criticize the fact that it was an overrun. It is a small percentage on a, a project that large. But I agree, this summer, it seems that your department really, and some of your projects, really got in there and realized that putting the, a Band-Aid over it was not going to fix it. So I think it was money well spent for the county to make sure that it was fixed correctly. And the overrun on this project is definitely because of that, so thank you.
What's the board's wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
You have a motion by Commissioner Gross.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Abinger. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried, your next item.
The next item is approval to advertise. This is on County Road 2, it's a Mill and Overlay project. We've been kind of waiting for this one, so it's, it's well, well-ready and going to be well-received, I believe, by the locals down in this area. We did change this one out, it was supposed to be built in 2020. I did ask for the board to allow me to switch this one back one year just so we could repair another road down the area that was a far more dangerous situation. This is just a Mill and Overlay on County Road 2, but we are also going to incorporate another side project into this one. Justin's been working with MINDOT to include two projects. So down in the, if you remember, this past summer, we removed a bridge on County Road 2, and we just took quotes on that. And I feel by, so, so what we had to do is we had to pave over these bridges. on that, and I feel by, so, so what we had to do is we had to pave over these bridges when we tear them out. This past summer, we just took quotes on it and, and had the contractor do the work. This current year, we're going to include it in a project and get competitive bidding on it. So on County Road 21, we removed a bridge, but it got done real late, and it was the very last one of our 12 this year, so it did not get paving over it. It's, what is it, maybe 150 feet or so? It's not a real big area. We're going to try this, we're going to include this one and tie them together. It's just a little, small paving job over the little creek on County Road 21.
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion to approve this.
Okay, we have a motion, a motion, and this is a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Gross.
And I also have a comment.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
This, the residents in this area have certainly been patient. This has been a project that, over the last 10 years, this road has seen a lot more traffic, significantly truck traffic. It's a cut across between the two interstates, and so the residents down there have been extremely patient and waiting for this. It's certainly overdue, I will say that. The road's starting to show its, its wear. But I know there's a, a part of the project that we've also discussed, a coordination with the Diversion Authority on the western edge of this road. I had questions from citizens this week about that second piece of the project. Can you share anything on that?
Right, so in 2021, we will be starting on basically the, the eastern city limits and then going east for five and a half miles or so. And then in 20, you know, we're going to start designing, surveying, designing the portion from the east city limits through town out to Trunk Highway 75 to include a complete reconstruct, additional storm sewer, we're going to try to correct some. It's a very low roadway through city of Comstock, so we're going to try to correct some of the drainage there. I know when talking with the, the mayor, the, I guess, Mr. Askeward, their drainage was always one of his major concerns that he'd like us to try to correct and improve if we can. There's railroad crossings, BN has a big crossing through there, so there's going to be rail, rail coordination, which is probably my biggest fear, as far as like timing, because I know in working with the Diversion Authority, they want this done ASAP. And I just don't think it's, would be possible to get it done 21, so it's shooting for 2022.
So, yeah, and because, because that, that's a project that's not coming out of our five-year plan, right?
It's on our five-year.
It's on, it's on our five-year plan with funds from the Diversion Authority.
Yep, correct. There was, it was kind of shown as there was some state aid funding as well, it was kind of a half and half. The way we put it together, it was essentially, it was kind of unfunded, but we were hoping to get some local funds to pick up, I think it was about a million dollars was shown in our five-year plan, that's going to be picked up by the Diversion Authority in addition to the county funds, so.
Any further questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried, okay, your next item.
And I just want to note that both these projects will be scheduled for letting on February 9th, the same day, so it's kind of nice to get our, all our Batumis done same time, we'll see where the prices are. And, you know, maybe if one project, one contractor doesn't get one, he may be bid a little, a little harder on the next one, or I guess we'll see how that goes. This next one is for County Road 6, that's our, probably the biggest area as far as gravel resources being transported within Clay County. The road is actually in pretty good shape, it's just the asphalt is, is a little rough, and it's, it's got some cross cracks in there that we're going to fix up. But as far as the integrity of the roadway, it's on a pretty good roadbed as it is. We're going to just mill and overlay this thing. There was an extreme soft spot on the west side that was repaired previously, there's a slough area there, there's sloughs on both sides, and that was graded out and repaired, not without some difficulty, but we got that done. So that's why this one starts about 1,700 feet east of Highway 32, and then it continues to the county line, so the total length's about 2.6 miles.
Also make a motion to approve this agenda request, see?
Okay.
Second.
Motion, and the second by Mojo and Commissioner Kaylee, and overlay for Casas 6. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried, we'll move into your fourth and final, request to adopt Resolution 2021-05, Bridge Prioritization, and Resolution 2021-06, Township Deficit Bridge Prioritization.
So every year, our bridge inspecting team, they go out and they inspect all our bridges to see how they're, how they're holding up, according to the pretty strict bridge standards and codes. We currently have two bridge inspectors, one is our retired one, Lee's been with us 30 years plus, and then Seth Pfeiffer's about halfway through his bridge inspection term before he's an actual team leader, so it's kind of nice to have both those individuals kind of tag teaming on this. They sit down with Justin, and he goes through the list, and if you just want to maybe walk through that real briefly.
Yeah, and like David mentioned, it is required by MINDOT, and I guess some of the new ones that we kind of put on there, on the county side, there is one up in Biding Township, it is for a personal residence, we just got done with design on that one, and we're looking for hopefully 2021 construction. And other than that, it really hasn't, nothing's glaring that's popping out. I mean, it's kind of the standard ones that have been on there for a while.
And we did remove a dozen of them this past year, so there, there is a lot of those ones that just were sliding down when there was no bridge funds. We got an influx of, you know, state bridge bonding funds as well as federal dollars. So we, we removed 12 of those, and then the, the next ones that look like they're, they're ready and eligible for replacement have been put on there. The one that Justin mentioned, Up In Biting Township, I believe you guys may have gotten some inquiries from the landowner on there. The bridge itself has had some maintenance dollars put into it, but as far as being able to carry capacity of like loaded grain trucks and bringing a product in and out of some grain bins that he rents, and possibly even fire trucks, so it would be good, it's really good to get this one out here, and we're hoping we get bond funds, and if so, we'll do it in 2021, if not for sure, as soon as we get bonding dollars for that one. And we have met with Wild Rice Watershed on that one, that's, goes along with that MOU that we have, so those are kind of split. So any non-participating costs outside of the funding mechanism would be split between Clay County and Wild Rice Watershed, that one.
Just a point of clarification, on our agenda, it shows the county resolution is 2021-05, you showed us 2021-07 in your document, so I, I think, on your document, I think we want to change that to 05, right? Colleen, is that correct? Okay, and then, and then the township bridge one would, would be 2021-06.
Are these bridges all listed on our five-year plan?
Not the township ones.
Oh, no, not the township ones, but the county ones.
Yes. Most of them are, yes.
If there is anything new on this resolution left, it'll be added to, you know, when we start working on the five-year plan here for approval for 2021, they will be added.
And our five-year plan is always updated according to this list as well.
Okay.
And, and it's all based on, on projected, um, bridge bonding?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll take these individually, resolution, do we have a motion on, or Resolution 2021-05, County Bridge Prioritization Replacement List?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-5, Township Bridges.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried, Resolution 2021-06.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-06 concerning County Bridge Replacement List.
Township Bridge Replacement.
No, this is county.
2021-06 is township. We just did, county was five.
Will we turn them around?
Yeah. They're backwards in the, in Dave's.
Do the township one?
We have a.
Pick whatever number you like.
We have a motion to do the township bridge by Mr. Gross. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ebinger, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried, thank you, Dave.
Question of those township bridges now, how does, how does that affect us? I mean, the townships have to pay for those bridges, right?
They have to pay them.
What, do we contribute something to that?
So what the county does on their behalf is we do, they do the inspections at no cost, I guess, we've never charged for the inspection and then coordination part of the, of that. And then as those structures are eligible for replacement, we work with them, we deliver the, you know, with the exception of just one or two, we've always been that we've done the survey, design, construction, engineering, and everything. But there is a, there is a small share that the state does not cover for those, and the townships are, I think the max is $20,000. The way it's set up is they have, they're fully covered with the exception of the first $10,000 for engineering and the first $10,000 of construction items not related to the bridge. So if there's grading or side culverts, so the max that any township would be responsible for would be $20,000.
The reason I ask is, I mean, we as a county right now approved a bunch of stuff for the townships.
Right.
I mean, we are aware of all this, that's.
Correct, we've been doing it for 20, 30 years, and I think that's pretty common with most townships in Minnesota, is the county has the inspection staff, they're trained and certified, and then they are, you know, are responsible for ensuring that the township structures are meeting compliance as well. So if those structures are not meeting compliance, if one single township bridge is not meeting the national bridge inspection standards compliance, the whole state of Minnesota is out of compliance, it's that strict. So that's why the MINDOT, the Bridge Division, makes sure that our guys are certified, they come out and they, we meet at, every so often, we meet at a bridge and we, we do an inspection together, and they say, well, what do you see? And then they show what, what we see, and they go back and forth, so it's, it's very good cross-training. But, so the county has always, I guess, kind of overseen the, the bridges on the township system.
Well, could the township say, well, no, we don't want to do it, or?
And I was going to allude to that, and that has been, you know, I've heard, oh, you know, I've never had that case here, there, what they typically want is, you know, bridges to, if you try to eliminate one, if there's one in the boondocks and hardly any traffic on it, you know, and the, the state does generally like to see bridges be eliminated, if they can be, you know, so rather than having one on every mile, our county's a little unique because we are kind of like that, we do have county gravel, you know, gravel roads on every mile, but there is a case where a township could kind of argue, and then, you know, the engineer has to do what they feel is right. Load posting is probably another major contentious issue, where if a township doesn't want to have a load posting, or doesn't want, actually it gets more to a point where you actually have to close a, a bridge. If there's a township bridge that's that bad, where the county engineering staff feels it needs to be closed, I've heard there's been issues where townships didn't agree with that. And I think if we ever did run into a case like that, we would just bring our state aid engineer and get MINDOT involved and, you know, educate and show them what the liabilities are. You know, that's the biggest thing is liabilities, if you don't close a bridge when it's dangerous and someone drives something heavy across there and takes it down, there could be major issues and major liabilities for everyone involved.
Yeah, okay, so it would really be unfortunate for a township not to be involved, they'd have to almost close that bridge.
Right. As I said, our, our township officials work very close with us, I believe they, you know, they appreciate what we do for them, and, you know, they like getting their structures replaced, and it's for the most part on a $150,000 structure, their cost is less than $20,000, so. I know, like Morkin Township, for instance, they've got, just, probably got more bridges than any town, township in our county, and I think they've only got one or two left that they haven't been replaced. So I know, like Lauren's extremely happy with our program, and he keeps a good, close eye on it, and for years, he's been saying, oh, we got four left, oh, we got three left, now we're down to, I think we have one left for them, so.
I think it's a good program, I was just going to make sure that we're not inflicting a cost on townships, in other words.
Pretty, pretty minimal, it's a, it's a good program.
Thank you.
We'll move into our committee reports. Suppose I just turn my microphone on. Our committee reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Gross, this morning?
Yeah, I had one committee, the Minnesota Rural Caucus, we had that yesterday, that was a virtual meeting. A lot of discussion on the highway, the department not possibly getting, there's around five, as far as Clay County, we're looking at the possibility of $511,000 that we may not get, it all depends how it all works out, legislature, how they're going to do, so there's a fairly big amount there for, for us to be concerned about, but what they're trying to do, or as the caucus, the rural counties are trying to do is to get constitutionally dedicated amounts to the transportation fund. And there's the motor vehicle rental, and there's a few items that aren't constitutionally dedicated, though. They're trying to get those dedicated, so that we're not, it's not a guessing game each year how much we're going to get. A lot of discussion on electric vehicles, how to tax them. I know, do you pay when they buy it, or you do it yearly, or how to, if they don't, what if you don't drive a tax electric vehicle very much, you know, so. Having a lot of discussion on how to tax like, electrical vehicles, so. Also, they're looking at broadband, and I don't know, I guess my question is, have any, if we got any broadband problems in Clay County that you're aware, that you're aware of, or does anybody complain? I know about five years, four or five years ago, I had a complaint on broadband, but I, I haven't had one since then, because they're looking at, I think the government has a pretty aggressive broadband policy, wants to get implemented, and they want to go along with the governor's plan, and I was just wanting.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
When the majority of our schools switched to online last March, the discussion regarding broadband, at least from people that I was speaking with, became magnified even more than before. And there are areas in Clay County where there's cable in the ground, I've had conversations with our engineering department as well as Mark Sloan on that, there's areas where there's this fiber optic in the ground, but it's not connected to anything, and there's not companies that are offering it. And there are certain pockets of Clay County that really are holes in terms of broadband or high-speed internet, and especially now when there are people doing Zoom meetings and school, classroom, virtual, it's, it's, it's a big problem. And it's crazy that we are this close to a major metropolitan of North Dakota and Minnesota in terms of out, out county, Clay County, and they're still not being served by that. So it is a big problem and something that we need to continue to advocate for.
Well, I guess I was just wanting, since I'm the committee, and I guess you are on the committee now too, you know, I mean, how do we express ourselves on the committee to say, hey, we got that problem too, you know? And what is our problem, or should we have a committee, local committee, finding out whether we have any broadband problems or not, you know? I'm not advocating more committees and stuff like that, but do we have anything that says what our broadband problem is?
Well, Mr. Chair, if I may, Frank, I think that's a really important, important statement, because the last, two years ago, there was a company putting fiber optic in ditches in southern Clay County, and our engineering department didn't even know what was going on, because they had asked for permission through the watershed, because the watershed oversees those ditches. And now it sits there, and there's not a company that can connect it. So I think there's, there's, it's disjointed, right? I mean, I think you have to have many parties at the table to have those discussions about how we get it up and going. I think it's a, a business piece, there needs to be businesses part of the discussion. I know you're on the, the EDC for Fergus Falls, and then now we have this Greater Fargo Memorial EDC piece too, and, and they're not necessarily Minnesota companies that would offer the high speed, they're North Dakota-based companies that would connect that in, so it, it's many-tiered, but we have to have those discussions.
You're, you're, you're right, Commissioner Mojo, and I, and the dilemma is, is that, that all of it is, is actually operated by private industry. It's all operated by private industry, there's no government entity that owns and operates, you know?
There's some, excuse me, but there's some company, not companies, counties, that have established their own broadband.
Well, okay, but yeah. So I.
Right.
What I, what I, what I'm getting at here is, is, you know, as Commissioner Mojo mentioned, you know, you get the infrastructure that's put in to a certain degree, then it stops, and it stops because there's, there aren't enough customers to warrant the investment on the part of the private industry to finish it. That's where, that's where. on the part of the private industry to finish it. That's where, that's where the work has to be done with the state and even at the federal level to help get that assistance for rural areas. So, there's an incentive to finish that for all of these rural homes. That, that's, that's where the, where the lobbying. I, I think for a county the size of Clay County to say, well, you know, we can take this on ourselves, I think would be, would be very difficult from a, from a cost perspective. But I, I, I think the, I think the, through MRC is a good place to.
Well, I know, and for me to pursue it.
Yeah.
I guess I'd have to know what is our problems, you know? Is there anybody in Clay County that knows what our broadband capabilities are?
Mr. Chair, I, I think the schools would have a pretty good idea with what families have been struggling with making connection with the school after this year. I bet they would have pretty good data.
All right, the schools would, but I'm talking, and thank you for that. I mean, Clay County, does anybody in Clay County do work with broadband?
Right, Mark, Mark Sloan does. Mark and I have had discussions this summer about it. There are, the bouton des development on Highway 10 is, is a very underserved area as well.
But, but, but even the, the state broadband coalition that was put together, and I know this goes back to when B.J. Sethi was still, was our administrator, there was still work being done at that time, and he's part of the broad, the, the governor's broadband task force. And so, you know, and I, and I've been at meetings at annual reports from MRC where, where they've talked about that, and they have an indication of what every county's needs are, from a terms of dollars needed for investment. And they've been, they've been pursuing that, and it's just a matter of getting the, the state legislature to do it. So, I, I don't know that the, we'd have to reinvent the wheel there. I think there's some data out there. I think you raised some really good points about, about reaching out to school districts to see if they can, and then maybe, maybe we can ask Mark Sloan to, to kind of give us a report and, and move it forward. And if, if we want to establish another committee, we can. At this point in time, I think maybe we should try to work through Mark and, and MRC.
And also Senator Klobuchar had, had a rural broadband initiative, I think maybe a year ago, and, and her aide Andy, I'm forgetting Andy's last.
Martin.
Yes, Andy Martin had been very vocal about the work and data that they'd put together about the Clay County areas.
There's a, there's a lot of information out there.
Well, I guess I'm just, I probably should do some more checking on it too before, but I go to rural meetings, and I go to the AMC meetings, they talk broadband, they talk broadband. And it's a big thing, you know, but I'm just saying, do we know how good we are, or where we're missing out, what areas that are that don't have broadband coverage? You know, I mean, if you got it yourself, you just think, well, everybody must have it, you know?
If they, if the, if the state and federals would, would appropriate the monies, for example, what Klobuchar's want, Senator Klobuchar's want to do, and at the state level, those monies then can be allocated back to some of these businesses to finish the job, that they normally, they, they don't, they can't see investing their dollars in it because there's no return. And when you're in the private business, that's what they do, you know. So, we, and because this is an important government function, that, you know, that's where certainly the government needs to be involved to make sure we provide that service to everybody.
Well, probably, I know what Jenny's saying, that Mark is knowledgeable on it. Probably can get a report or something like that. Show us where we're at on it, you know. I guess I would just like to know, how much should we push in Clay County? I mean, I realize we want broadband for everybody, but.
Steve, why don't we have that as an agenda item coming up? As soon as Mark could be ready to give us a report on what he knows, and maybe we can reach out to school districts to find out what they may know, and we can have a more dialogue to help Frank and Jenny, when they go to MRC, to get, get the help we need.
Okay, thank you. That was very much my only meeting.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you. Last Tuesday, we had a CARES Act committee meeting with representatives from all of the cities within Clay County, continuation of the discussions that we had this late fall, or late summer and fall, about relief to the businesses within Clay County. I think we had really great dialogue about how to address the needs that we're seeing with the funds that were allocated by the state legislature in December. We will have another meeting this afternoon to further what that application process looks like for small businesses. We're trying to work swiftly and diligently, but also make the dollars that we allocate to businesses worthwhile. I think it's an understatement to say that our businesses are hurting, and we need to do what we can to help alleviate some of that pain. Thursday, we also had another, our county CARES Act committee meeting to discuss the application process, the questions on that, and when the timeline is looking like. We are looking to have that open, Steve, am I correct, in the next two weeks?
That's correct.
It's fair to say, okay. That concludes my reports for the week.
Commissioner Mojo, I know Commissioner Ebinger and Commissioner Kaylee, you probably haven't had any committee reports, but were you invited to the annual conference that was virtual, the AMC conference? Did you?
Yes.
I, I was, and I couldn't, it was hard to see out of the hundreds of, but I don't know if you care to comment on, on that experience, or?
I think having attended conferences for about forty years now, there was a lot of effort put into that. I was not, I don't think you benefit nearly as well in a virtual setting like that. And obviously, the networking and the getting to know your counterparts around the state, that's going to be critical, and I, I look forward to when we can get through this and, and go back to the more traditional methods. But I did, I, I, there was obviously a lot of effort put into it, and it gave me, it gave me some input on it.
I think you're right, and I think when you can get to it where you're actually present, that's where you, you really gain a lot of knowledge dealing with other commissioners. Like I mentioned, I found it quite painful to sit on that long virtual meeting, but.
Well, a lot of those virtual meetings are trying to get people to unmute and mute themselves.
How about you, Commissioner Kaylee?
Uh, I would agree. You know, virtual meetings, you don't get as much out of them, but I think they did a fantastic job. Technically, it went off without a hitch, so they did a fantastic job with that. If I could just take a moment too, to thank all of the county employees who have helped with our orientation and tours and just meeting people. I am so excited to work with this crew. Clay County really has a fantastic set of employees and people working here. I'm just so grateful to all of the time you all took to meet with me. Thank you.
Just hope the excitement continues.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Administrator?
I think, thank you, Mr. Chair. On the last Tuesday, participated in the meeting with the county and the city. That's been, been covered already. That afternoon, I did do a walkthrough at the new government center with the RDO representatives. They did turn over the building to us that last week. On the thirtieth, we toured, I toured a number of the campus buildings with Commissioner Kaylee and Commissioner Ebiger. We had a little bit of a marathon day that day, but, but we were, were able to see most of, most of the campus buildings. On the thirtieth, I met with Mark Sloan and Darren about the business relief program and our draft application. Also did put in for certification for our, our state funding allotment to the business relief grant. We did receive notification that we did receive those, the 1.245 million dollars last Thursday. And so, as we prepare for our, our business relief program here, we will, we'll be ready to, ready to go with those funds. On the Thursday, I met, we met as our, our cares committee and discussed business relief that's been already spoken about. That afternoon, I met with Kathy McKay and Kent Severson on the community health board. And yesterday, I spoke with Nicole Hanson, county administrator from Ottertail County about the CHP, along with conversations yesterday with Joe Olson and Ben Madsen. Throughout the last week, I did have a number of discussions with business owners, inquiring about our business relief program. And also just to note, our intergovernmental retreat is going to be held the January 29th virtually. And, and so, we'll be, we'll be finalizing that, that registration this week. And so, our, our, our city and county participants should be receiving that, the registration notifications later. That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
So, on the, on the, on that joint powers board, they normally meet Thursdays. We're not meeting this week, are we?
We've not received invitation. I know that, that Colleen has passed on information to Dilworth that they're, they'll be hosting this year.
I, I think oftentimes, we have not met in January, so I, I don't have it on my calendar, so I.
No, there has been no, nope.
Wonderful. It's one of my favorite seven o'clock in the morning. Commissioner Gross and I really like these real early morning meetings.
You got that right.
All right. So, who's, who's the other, who's the other one on that now?
Would be Commissioner Kaylee.
Kaylee, okay. So, so that is in Dilworth now?
Uh, well, I think we'll still be meeting virtually.
Okay.
At this point, but, but yeah, we'll, I assume they'll notify us where we'll be.
All right, so we'll expect, we'll expect, okay, and you, we'll get a invite for that? Okay. Wonderful. I did not give my report. On the 29th and the 31st, we did have the CARES meetings that have been already spoken, talked about by Commissioner Mojo and Steve, so I'm not going to go into that anymore than the fact that we have a lot of work to do in a very short amount of time to get it done on behalf of our businesses. I, I, I do have one thing that sometimes you wake up in the middle of the night thinking of things, and this is one that woke me up last night. Oddly enough, and when you talk about your, our new government center, I don't know, we certainly don't have any elections coming up this year at the county level or at the state level, but I, I'm not so sure about cities. And I, I think back to voting locations, because, because of our auditor's office being a voting location, and if we're moving, do we need to formally adopt something? I know, I know the city of Morehead here a couple of years ago ran into some issues because they didn't do something in the appropriate timeframe that needed to be done. So, I'm concerned that, that, do we have to do anything? Is the voting going to take place here, or is it going to take, take place at the new offices?
We've had some, some initial discussions with Lori on that, and, and we do have a, a plan to move voting out into the, the new government center. We have a fairly decent setup with, with how we would plan to utilize that.
Okay, but if, if that's the intent, there's, there has to be some formal action done within a certain timeframe for that to happen. I just want to make sure that we're going to be following that.
Yes, we will.
Okay, because I don't know if the city has elections in this year or not. I don't know how they work. Council? Oh, yeah, that's right. There could be a special election or something. So, I think we need to be mindful of that and make sure that we do that in time. Anything else? Brian, anything from?
Mr. Chair, I just had a question. Will AMC do the new commissioner orientation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Mojo, yes, they are doing it. Unfortunately, it's going to be held virtually over three different sessions in, in, I think, January, February, and maybe one in March. At this point, AMC hasn't, hasn't made any decisions on holding anything in person, but we do know that the orientation will be online.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to the real hardware operations. Colleen, do you have anything for us today?
Boss.
Done. Word heard. I normally don't do that, but that was for Commissioner Wayland.